Planning Commission for the City of Wilsonville on Wednesday, December 11th, 2019 is now in session. Will our clerk please call a roll?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Postman.
Here.
Ron Heberline.
Here.
Peter Hurley.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon. Simon Springall.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is a time the citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item which is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. I do not see any members of the community in the audience. We move on to a consideration of the November 13, 2019 Planning Commission minutes. They have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? Seeing none.
Let the record show my abstention of the vote. I wasn't here, so.
Oh.
And my apologies for having zoned out on the commission meeting.
Of course.
The same would apply to me as well, though.
I'm not sure exactly what the parliamentary requirement is here. But we weren't going to have a vote. A vote, but we will now. Those in favor of accepting the minutes as distributed.
Do you have a motion?
If you're going to have a vote on it, you have to.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
I approve that we approve the minutes as distributed.
A second, please. Second. It's moved and seconded that we accept the minutes of the November 13 minutes meeting as distributed. Those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll note my abstain as well.
Any abstentions?
Yes.
Abstain.
The minutes are approved as distributed.
Well, hold on, you're short of a quorum for that, then.
Yeah, you're short, you're short a majority vote.
You have three abstentions.
We have three.
Three abstentions.
So we can continue it till the next. Why don't, if somebody would like to make a motion to continue this matter till the next.
I'll move we continue. Continue the approval of the minutes till the next Planning Commission meeting.
A second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we continue the consideration of the minutes of the November meeting until our next meeting in January. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
They can, the people who abstained can vote on the continuance.
Yes.
I don't know that we'll, if, if folks who are not present abstain, we won't ever have enough votes on the minutes.
Let's deal with that in January.
You can have, was Phyllis here?
Phyllis was here.
So she can partic, can you do it electronically, Amanda?
No. No, we don't, we don't.
You can get to a quorum.
So we haven't been voting on previous minute approvals.
Correct.
Right.
If there's no changes, we have not been voting on previous minute approvals.
Right.
So can we just rewind the clock and not vote?
It's been moved and seconded that we continue this consideration to our January meeting. I'll ask again, those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Then we will continue this matter until the January meeting.
Can I just address a point of order, though? I think what was being, was being brought up is that Phyllis will also not be here in January. Correct?
Phyllis will be here, but if we need. Excuse me. Commissioner Ramon will be here in January. However, if Cameron, Commissioner Mesba, Commissioner Heberline, and Springall, were you abstaining?
No.
So two abstent, two abstentions, so we will only have three commissioners in January who would be able to approve the minutes. And three of seven will not be a quorum. That was the observation that I was trying to point out.
On the assumption that Commissioner Mellon will not be.
No, Commissioner.
On the assumption she will be here.
Will be here. But Commissioners Postman Hurley, who were at the last meeting.
Was not there.
Oh, you were not there either. There were only four people.
Just Peter.
I'm the only.
Sounds like he's here in January, doesn't it?
Is that an issue, or in January, do we just not vote on the minutes? If there are no changes? That's a legal question that I have.
We don't have to vote on the minutes if there's no objection or changes to the minutes.
Or challenge on quorum.
Correct. So was there a clear vote on the motion to continue till January?
Yes, it was.
It was.
And first, second, so, so it's, so we're going to address them in January, we just can't accept them as presented?
Not with the motion already presented.
Now that we've got the motion got you.
Okay.
We're moving on now to our main business of the evening, which are, which is a series of informational items, the first of which has to do with the SROZ regulations and background. And I'll ask Director Vashel to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chair Greenfield, Commissioners. As I noted at the last meeting, I have invited Natural Resources Manager Carrie Rappold here this evening to provide you with a presentation on the Significant Resource Overlay Zone. And this has really stemmed from a number of projects that we've discussed over the last year or two, both in terms of master planning and concept planning, but then also through the residential modifications project that we've been working, several work sessions with you over. A number of times through those various projects, questions have come up about open space standards, natural resource protections, and how those different elements interface. In particular, when we're counting Significant Resource Overlay Zone towards the open space standards, there have just come a lot of questions of how, what's kind of being done overall in terms of natural resource management. And I thought that it would be helpful to have Mr. Rappold come here and give a presentation on our SROZ and what the Natural Resources Program is working on, to give you a more holistic picture of how these different elements interface, so that when we do come back and talk to you again about those residential zoning standards and the modifications that we're making, as well as in future master planning efforts, when we're talking about open space standards, it will make a little bit more sense and have some more clarity by having more of an overview of the SROZ program overall. So that is the intent this evening, and Mr. Rappold, if you'd like to take it away, that'd be great.
Thanks, Miranda. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. As Miranda mentioned, I'm Carrie Rappold, the Natural Resources Manager. And so tonight, I'm going to give you a training overview of the Significant Resource Overlay Zone. And so this clearly is something that we did in regards to Goal Five. Goal Five, as all of the statewide planning goals, has been around since, you know, the 1970s. We did have a previous program that was done under the old Goal Five rule, that I'll talk a little bit about. And then this program that we have now, the Significant Resource Overlay Zone, was adopted under the new Goal Five rule that was implemented in 1995. And we ultimately adopted these requirements in June of 2001. So the intent of, you know, Goal Five is to protect natural resources, and, but it also includes these categories of conserving scenic and historic areas and open spaces. But I'll primarily, or, you know, entirely be just talking tonight about natural resources that applies to Goal Five. As I mentioned, you know, local governments require to adopt a program that's in compliance with the goal. And so as part of that, you know, we had to go through an effort of inventorying resources and then looking at the significance of those resources, and then ultimately coming up with a program and a code that addresses that. And so I'll go into some detail about that tonight. As I mentioned, prior to the Significant Resource Overlay Zone, we had what was called primary open space and secondary open space. And the great thing that, when we came to adopting our new program, is that many of these resources that we protect today were protected also under POS and SOS. I'll show you, though, there's some differences, though, in terms of how those were protected and how, I won't get into the code really that applied to POS and SOS, but show you some examples of how that worked in terms of a particular area. So this program was from the early 1980s, and like I said, it interfaced pretty well with the new program that we have. POS was this category that did not allow any development. And so basically, you had, you know, stream corridors, maybe a little bit in terms of wetlands, and some what we call wildlife habitat that were protected under the POS. And then SOS was kind of more this buffer area that surrounded the POS and really allowed for development, provided some protection in terms of POS. So this is the Wilsonville High School site along Wilsonville Road. And so we have basically the headwaters area, part of it for Meridian Creek. And so that, that channel that's on the west side of the school site, that is one of the forks of Meridian Creek. And then we have the main stem of Meridian Creek on the east side. And so that area in kind of a turquoise color is the POS, and then the SOS is the gold or kind of light tan color. And as you can see, lines don't really kind of correspond with the resources exactly, but I think it was, you know, the best attempt at that point in terms of, you know, laying this out and looking at how these areas could be protected. So that certainly protected a repairing area, and then the, you know, the trees and the wildlife habitat that was part of that. As you can see, the sports fields, you know, were really developed within that SOS area. But there's a good part of that SOS that was, you know, undeveloped, too. And I'll show you a little comparison between currently what's protected in SROZ and what this did. So as part of working on our SROZ adoption, we also had to comply with Title III, which is the Metro requirement. And those, those aspects of Title III were actually incorporated into our code and our compliance. So there's a table actually within the SROZ that shows these water quality resource areas and the minimum protections that are associated with that. So one thing that came out of our program was that all streams and all wetlands that are significant wetlands, which we require a wetland to be at least a half acre and meet some other functional criteria to be considered locally significant as far as a wetland. But all streams, whether they had been altered or changed by, you know, people over time, they all received a minimum 50-foot buffer. And that 50-foot buffer for the stream, as well as that 50-foot buffer for the wetland areas that are significant, those are prohibited areas in terms of development. And then we had to have these aspects of protecting life and property in terms of flooding, so that was incorporated into this program, as well as some of our other code. And then about 2006 or '07, somewhere in that range, Metro adopted Title 13, which really deals more with wildlife habitat or what they call habitat-friendly development. And so we had to go through another process there, which was separate from what we had done back in 2001, to show that we were in compliance with Title 13. The good news was that we really used our existing resource mapping and, for the most part, our existing code. I mean, it was actually our decision to add some elements of the model code that Metro adopted into our existing SROZ regulations. So there really wasn't a lot that changed. We have a good program that Metro, you know, acknowledged and recognized for what it does, so. But there's these elements of Title 13 in terms of controlling and preventing pollution. But mainly, the thing that you'll see if you look at our code is there's a table of what are called habitat-friendly development practices. But once again, those were a lot of things that we were already doing, such as stormwater management, where we use green infrastructure, low-impact development, try not to create barriers to wildlife movement. If you've ever seen Beckman Road or Kinsman Road, we've gone to a great extent to preserve, you know, wildlife movement through these areas, especially the Coffee Lake wetlands. And so we were really, you know, quite a ways along in terms of just showing that Title 13 was something that wasn't difficult for us to comply with. So as I mentioned, back in the late 1990s, the city undertook an inventory of the three categories that we protect: the locally significant wetlands, repairing corridors, and what's called wildlife habitat. So wildlife habitat is really just kind of these fringe areas around a riparian corridor, which the riparian corridor is that area that drains directly to a wetland or to a stream or to a river, like the Willamette River. And then wildlife habitat is basically either the fringe, forested areas associated with that riparian area, or actually isolated upland forest. If you go to Villebois, there's a very large 10-acre isolated upland forest there. That's up in the northwest corner, and that's protected in our SROZ. As I mentioned, all riparian corridors were considered to be significant, and at a minimum, they get a 50-foot buffer. In the case of Beckman, you know, that corridor through there is 600 to 800 feet. So it's a much wider, you know, protected area in terms of the riparian corridor. And then we had to go through this process of looking at the significance determination for all these map resources that we had in the community. And basically, we have functional criteria that looks at the significance. And what's important in terms of looking at our code is that those were all ranked based on low, medium, and high in terms of the functional criteria. So we've had a number of people come to us to talk about, you know, the significance today of a resource, and what they have to do in order to show that it's not significant is to show one of those functional criterias no longer rated as high. So that's the real critical test in terms of whether we say, yes, this resource is no longer protected, or we're minimizing the protection for it. This is just a map that shows these protected areas within the community, whether they correspond with Beckman Creek, Coffee Lake Creek, Arrowhead Creek, the Coffee Lake wetlands. So you can see we have a rather significant, you know, area that's protected within the community. And the good news is that, since, you know, we've been implementing this program, we've had very little impact to it. It's probably on the order of maybe a few acres. And so, you know, the program works really well in that respect. These are just some areas throughout the city, you know, like I mentioned, the Coffee Lake wetlands, the Beckman Creek corridor. Both of those provide important connections for wildlife as they move through our community. This is, you know, of course, the Willamette River. We have a vast array of wildlife in this community, whether it's bald eagles, ospreys, hawks, a very, you know, significant amphibian population, red-legged frogs. This is a cutthroat trout. Throughout the entire extent of Beckman Creek, there are cutthroat trout that are found within it. And black-tailed deer certainly are very common within the community, coyote. But we also have evidence of, you know, cougars, bobcats. I had the, you know, the distinct honor to kind of, to see a bobcat within Wilsonville. And I was only maybe like 20 yards from it, so. Yeah, so we really, you know, the, the work that's been done by everybody in this community to protect these resource areas is pretty significant, and what we have today is, for an urbanized area, you know, we should be proud of. So this, once again, is the, the map I showed you earlier. So that's what was protected under POS and SOS. And this is what it looks like today in terms of what's protected within the SROZ. So it corresponds a lot more closely with, you know, the, the forested area, the drip line, you know, as close as possible of those trees. But it also recognizes when we were creating the program where development had already occurred. So, you know, at the very least, we have some sites, especially along, like Montgomery Way, where there's a lot of protected area in there. So we had to leave what we call like donut holes for where some of this existing development was. And so, you know, it was a very, it was a detailed process, but as with any of this type of work, you know, there was only a certain amount of ground truthing that we could do with all of these sites. And so that's where it's really critically important when we get development applications, we go through initially what's called a map verification process. And that's just to determine if that, you know, mapping is actually accurate. And so that happens every time that we have an application, as well as like situations like Beckman Creek and that repairing corridor, we look at the Metro Title III requirements again in terms of those water resource area boundaries. So if you walk away with anything, oh, this is, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here, but we also have some diagrams that are within our code. This is just one example on the left-hand side. Basically, it tried to give people an idea of, you know, these various categories that we have in terms of, you know, the riparian area protection. And I'm going to talk a little bit more because it's, it's the most critical part of the code in terms of understanding the SROZ. It's this area that we call the area of limited conflicting use. It's really, it's the only area that we allow any potential development. And out of that area, we only allow up to 5% of whatever it is. The table on the right-hand side is that table I mentioned that we adopted as part of our Title III compliance. So those sets of minimum buffers that we have to ensure are met in terms of any site that contains the SROZ. And like I said, that one up at the top, that primary protected water feature, everything receives at least a minimum 50-foot buffer in terms of a stream corridor. So as I mentioned, yeah, this area of limited conflicting use is really critical in terms of understanding our code, because it's really the key to looking at like what somebody could potentially do. And it's a pretty actually difficult definition to read. It took me a while to really get comfortable with it and to try to, try to explain it to other people. But what it really basically says is that the area is confined to really just wildlife habitat. And that wildlife habitat could be that fringe area along a riparian corridor, or it could be these isolated upland forests. And I'll show you an example later of that 10-acre forest I mentioned in Villebois, where this 5% came into play in terms of the area of limited conflicting use. And as I mentioned, that 50 feet is pretty critical in terms of understanding the minimum setback. So this is that definition I mentioned. If you want to just take a second to read it, and let me know if you think that is easy to understand. I mean, I, I, I clearly understand what it's saying, but what it's really saying is that basically, if you put all these other boundaries into effect and, you know, show where they are, what is beyond that, you know? And usually, well, the only thing that is beyond that is that fringe forested area alongside the repairing corridors or an upland forest. That is the only area that we allow any type of impact. So like I said, those stream corridors and those significant wetlands and their buffers are prohibited from development. The only thing that can occur in those areas are uses that are exempt, or activities that are exempt. And we have quite a few of those. I mean, one of the more typical things we see is when you're dealing with stormwater, that stormwater has to go somewhere. And, you know, it's going to go to an outfall that's going to take it down to a stream or to the Willamette River. And so those types of things, utilities and extensions like that, are certainly exempted because it, we have to allow for something like that. And like I said, so the only thing really that falls into this is that, you know, significant wildlife habitat. So within our code, there is basically, like I mentioned already, this map verification process that happens with any site that comes in to propose development where the SROZ exists on it. But we also have the possibility of somebody, you know, requesting a map refinement. This is actually Grand Point within the Villebois development. So this is in the far southwest corner of Villebois. It's a, it's a beautiful area. It's about 45 acres and about probably 23 acres within that, that part of Villebois is protected in the SROZ. So it contains forested wetlands, it contains a stream channel that actually is connected to Graham Oaks Nature Park, and it contains some wetland areas. So as I mentioned, you know, we didn't get a chance to ground truth every one of these areas and really spend as much time as you could when you're actually looking to develop it. And so there's always this process of applicants working with me to, to look at the resources and to have a discussion about potentially modifying that. And once again, that comes back to those criteria that I mentioned, and how we go about saying, does this area still have at least one criterion that's rates high? And so that's what happened here, where we looked at some modifications that moved the boundary. It actually even added some areas that they willingly added in terms of created SROZ, which is up on the north side. And so it just doesn't happen a lot in terms of our process, but it's something that we periodically go through. So like I said, the map, the review process includes that map verification. We usually try to look at these exempt uses or activities right from the start and say, these aren't subject to the SROZ. If they are proposing impacts that are allowable within that area of limited conflicting use, then they may either be subject to what's called an abbreviated Significant Resource Impact Report or a standard. Most of the times, if it's a larger development, it's going to be a standard SRIR. And ultimately, if we allow them to impact the resource area, which is a process of saying, you know, what did you do to avoid the resource? What did you do to minimize your impact? And if you are going to impact it, and we're going to allow you to fall within that 5%, you're also going to mitigate for whatever impacts that you have. And like I said, there's a whole range of these exempt uses and activities, you know, whether they're emergency procedures. Basically, any of our capital projects are going to be exempted from the SROZ, because we're going to really be looking at those, you know, from the same level of, oh, thanks. And, and a lot of times with our projects, we have to go through other types of permitting, wetland permitting, which involves kind of the same process of looking at these things. And then, you know, things like removal invasive species. This one comes into play a lot, this minor encroachment. You know, I've had people get this exemption for putting like a pad in for a gangway down on the Willamette River, or a shed, a lot of sheds are 10 by 12. And I think that was maybe the basis for coming up with 120 square feet. Public or private, like I mentioned, connections, lateral connections, and then, like I said, the CIPs. So the SRIR would either fall into this abbreviated, which is really just kind of very minor impacts in terms of like a single-family dwelling. Most of the information I provide to the applicant and work with them very closely on that. The standard SRIR has to be done by a resource professional. It includes everything from the physical to the ecological, and then ultimately, how do they mitigate these impacts through a mitigation plan? Excuse me. And then, sorry, those review criteria. So when we do have a proposal that includes the SRIR, there's findings like we would make with any other type of land use determination. So I work on those findings. As I mentioned, Metro adopted these habitat-friendly development practices, part of Title 13, so there's a table that's in our code. And like I said, really, a lot of this we were doing anyways in terms of protecting resources in the community. But, you know, it included things about stormwater management, reducing impervious surfaces. You know, we do a lot in terms of looking like planned, planned development in terms of how people lay out, you know, development they're proposing in the community. And then just trying to minimize the impact to the soil, the plants, and everything else that would be on the site. And so this last example here, this is that forest I mentioned in Villebois. So this is up in the far northwest, west corner. It's called Tonquin Woods, that area. And so they came in and proposed these impacts to the 10-acre forest that fell within that 5% allowable, because this is all considered an area of limited conflicting use. So it's 10 acres, so 5% of that would be a half acre. And so that's what the table on the right shows in terms of the amount that they impacted. And then what they have to do is with, in order to come up with an area ratio, which I'll show you next, we look at like the existing condition of the resource, how they're going to improve that resource, and then where are they mitigating it? And so these were pretty minor impacts. They were for a trail system. Up on the north end is actually a nature play area that's there. And then some impacts that were associated with the road and the stormwater system. And this is that table I mentioned, so it all goes back to that idea of low, medium, and high in terms of the functionality of those resource areas. And we look at the existing function, existing function at the mid. And we look at the existing function, existing function at the mitigation site, and then how they're proposing to improve it. So with this one, we came up with a two and a half to one ratio, or they did, and they proposed that. And that's about it. So hopefully that gave you a good overview, but I'm certainly open to any questions that you might have.
I got one for you. On slide eight, where you've got the picture of the wildlife habitat, riparian corridor, et cetera.
Slide eight.
Yeah, keep going.
Not that one.
No, there you go.
Okay.
So lower left-hand corner, there's a APTH. What does that stand for?
It's appropriate tree, it's, it's basically the, the appropriate tree potential height. So it's what we would think about in terms of what would that, like if it was a Douglas fir tree or a hemlock tree or a cedar, what would be the ultimate mature height of that tree? And so that sets the, basically the boundary there in terms of, you know, like if you thought about if that falling over, like what would be that length?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good question, though.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned that you evaluate mitigation proposals and so forth. How are these mitigation proposals as built working?
Um, it's another good question. I'd say probably, you know, most of them are working pretty well. There's some that are certainly not as, as good in terms of how they've been maintained. Because really, what we require is a five-year maintenance and mitigation requirement, or maintenance and monitoring requirement. So once especially you get outside that five-year period, I mean, it's still going to be contained most likely within a conservation easement, but we don't monitor it as closely after that five-year period. So I'd say that for the most part, they've worked pretty well. And the good part too is that we really haven't had a lot of mitigation sites, so.
So with all the growth that we have, for example, on Beckman Creek, I read in the minutes that, and you mentioned again today, that we have salmonoids in the creek. We don't have ongoing, continuous water monitoring in the creeks.
Oh, yeah.
We do.
Yeah. In fact, I manage our, our NPDS compliance. And so as part of our requirements through the NPDS program and our permit, we have to have ongoing in-stream monitoring. So not only do we monitor in-stream water quality, but we've also, we're doing temperature monitoring. And one thing that we've been able to demonstrate through our temperature monitoring is that, at least for Beckman Creek, we can meet the requirement in terms of what the TMDL shows as far as temperature. So, I mean, we have some limitations, like any urbanized area. We're, we're going to have limitations in terms of especially the, like the benthic community and the macroinvertebrates and other things that, you know, contribute to a healthy aquatic resource. But, you know, we're fortunate that we have, you know, areas that provide rearing and migratory, you know, places for salmonoids. And, yeah, we, we do, we do a lot of monitoring in regards to.
So what is the temperature trend?
Um, it's actually not too bad. I mean.
Is it flat or is it going up or down or?
I mean, we don't really have a very robust, you know, data set in terms of that, but I'd say that over the last, you know, five years, it's certainly, we haven't seen any significant increase. We actually partnered with the USGS on a study that they did for the entire Willamette River, or not the entire, but at least above the Willamette Falls. And our numbers were very consistent with what they were showing too, so.
The, I don't know whether it's USGS, but the Willamette watershed, one of its shortcomings or threats or challenges is temperature.
Oh, yeah, temperature's a major issue.
So, and that's the entire watershed, goes, going all the way to the head streams, which is where Wilsonville is. And that's why I was asking, because if we have salmonoids in the streams, even if it's being used as nursery, the temperature, if in the long run is going to keep increasing, is going to kill those. And that should be the proof of whether or not any of our actions are working. And one of the things that struck me is this is great as a zoning instrument. I love it. It's very well put together. It's clear, even though some people may look at it and say, well, I have to read it twice to understand what it's saying. Well, it's zoning. But I'm not seeing enough reference here to ongoing monitoring, which clearly is happening. And curves that show the trends, whether or not this is working, whether the habitat improvement is working.
Right.
Or whether we are losing habitat. Temperature is another one. Water quality, whether it's base flow or storm flow, those would be the other stuff. Are we having erosion in certain areas or not? Do we have annual reports on this? We are monitoring, but do we create reports?
Yes, yes. We have our annual report that we, we do for our NPDS compliance, so that has the most relevant information, which would be directly related to, you know, water quality, monitoring in-stream at outfalls. And then, like I said, covers, you know, we're looking at temperature, even though we're not required to do that type of local monitoring as far as temperature. The problem probably from a temperature, I don't want to get too deep, but from a temperature perspective, is more the river than Beckman Creek. Because that has extreme fluctuations in terms of that temperature. And there's not the stratification you would expect to see in terms of the river. It's pretty much constant, that temperature throughout the river. And so that's a huge challenge when you're talking just about salmonoids and, you know, their ability to survive long-term. But, you know, the, the wildlife habitat, that's a little bit more difficult to kind of gauge in terms of, you know, are we seeing fewer species now, you know? Are we seeing, you know, about the same? And then also in terms of, you know, you know, the, the quality of that habitat, you know? Certainly there are changes that are occurring with, you know, climate, you know, and what we're seeing today versus 10 years ago. And so, but that, I don't think we have a very quantitative, you know, look at that certainly.
Well, one of the things that, from the forestry, urban forestry report was coming up with Seattle's model, which I'm hoping Wilsonville will adopt, is that they are including issues with climate change and tracking that and species.
Yep.
Selections and so forth. Stormwater is very closely tied to forestry, urban forestry.
Oh, yeah.
And our, our standards, that is why I keep asking about monitoring. The reports are available on, on the website?
Yep.
I would be very interested in checking it on an annual basis because the issue becomes, is this working or not? And all of the, the presentation here is very good, but it's not answering that question.
Sure.
We're going through all of these motions, what good is it doing?
Yeah. And this is just, you know, this is our regulatory program in terms of how we, you know, look at development and, but yes, if you go to the natural resources program section under community development, you'll find a link to NPDS and our reports that we do. And so, yeah, all of that is there, you know, accessible for you to look at.
So my other question is, you mentioned natural resources, inventory, and plan. Is there a plan document for, for natural resources? Do we have goals and objectives?
Well.
And metrics that we can measure whether or not we're meeting our objectives?
When I say plan, it was really the plan that was part of adopting, you know, the SROZ regulations. So we have, you know, we have the, the sheets that we looked at in terms of, you know, there's a sheet specific to every resource category that we looked at and every resource site. So that's really what the plan is. So the plan, and then we also had what was called the EC analysis, you know, where we went through the extensive step of looking at it from a number of perspectives, you know, the economics, the resource protection. And so those all fit in in terms of how we actually ultimately adopted a code like this.
So we are essentially adopting the regional goals and objectives for natural resources?
Yeah.
Instead of something that may be local?
Well, no, it's very specific to, like, it, it's a very specific, you know, program in terms of our local resources because it was developed, you know, for us to, you know, apply to development. There's no other program exactly like this.
I understand that, but we don't have a vision for Beckman Creek, for example, in our natural resources plan.
No.
So that would be what I would be looking for in a natural resources plan with goals and objectives, and the metrics that says, are we getting close or not?
Yeah.
And I've brought up a couple of times that I think Wilsonville would benefit from having such a plan, such a document, with its monitoring tied to, to objectives in that plan. The one last thing in all of your presentation, and this is, everybody who's worked in the line that you're working, in the line that I, and this is my life used to be.
Yeah.
This business that we will look at a wetland and let the property owner tell us which function is no longer there is asking for abuse. And I saw a lot of wetlands that got, cropped the hell out of them.
Uh-huh.
And then they bring us, say, well, it's not a wetland anymore. And yes, no, it's not, because in, in Wisconsin at least, farmed wetlands were exempt from a lot of wetland.
Sure.
Requirements. So that was the out. And in a few instances, we managed to get the Department of Transportation to make those wetlands that were not wetlands anymore a receiving area for wetland banking.
Oh, okay.
And restored them. The idea of restoring locally significant and, or locally precious, I would call it, resources, requires a little bit more discussion, a little bit more education for the residents. Because a small wetland could be crucial to the quality of a small stream that receives whatever comes out of that wetland.
Right.
Even through a pipe. It doesn't need to be connected. It could be base flow that we're dealing with from a small wetland area. So when I see that verbiage, I always worry about whether or not we're kind of ducking some of these issues. I'm not suggesting you are.
Sure.
I'm sure you're putting the, putting the, the, the pressure on the applicant, saying, have you done everything that you could? I worry that we're losing functions in regenerative processes that we could be having in place instead of what is in, in, in that site right now.
Right. No, those are all legitimate concerns, you know? And I certainly go through this process a lot in terms of working with wetland, you know, resource professionals and how we go about looking at a site and, you know, and what can we do to, even if it's not protected under our code, you know, what can you do to actually try to preserve that and incorporate it into a development site? Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. And it's then subject to whatever the state and the federal agencies will allow. So, I'll have to, now, I'm from Wisconsin too, so, and I lived in Madison.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful. I think it's wonderful.
Yes, lovely state.
The, the issue that you just mentioned came up at the conference that we had a few days ago.
Yeah.
The lady from, the state was, was bringing that up, that sometimes we lose these small resources because they're small, they're below our standards and so forth. But they have locally very big impact and, and we should be. The, the element in all of that discussion that I think would be important for the planning commission to, to remember is in our development planning, we are creating legal rights when we approve developments. The time to look at some of these resources and say, this really is a community resource that shouldn't be developed, is before we approve those rights. Once we approve something, whether it's a plan or whatever, then we have created a right to whoever owns that in a way that we can't very well claw back. So I encourage in all of our processes to put a lot of forethought in the areas that we claim to be developable one way or another.
Okay. No, I think those, those are good points, you know? We, we need your guidance too and your direction in regards to how we go about doing some of these things.
Yeah, just briefly, I, thank you, Commissioner Mesba. I, I appreciate those comments and I, I agree with what you're saying. We need, we need to kind of have monitoring processes and we need to be able to understand the long-term trend of what's happening to our natural areas in, in the city. When I was on the DRB some years back, I, both of these, both these things, these areas of Vilbois that you're presented tonight came up. One of them was the Grand Point and that, the big re, the, the detailed adjustments for the SROZ, I was very interested in that, but it, it did seem a very carefully developed plan from the applicant, and I guess you must have worked with them to, to help make those, those finite, those very, you know, specific adjustments to the, to the wetlands and zone areas. The other thing, so the other thing that occurs to me is, is because this does relate so much to planning and to approval of specific developments, this is, this is information that's really important to bring in front of the, the city council obviously, but also the DRBs, because they're approving, you know, specific developments, as you know, and, and we're much more big-picture, master plan sort of stuff. So I'm, I'm hoping that you'll be able to take this information to the DRBs next year.
Yeah, I've taken it to them in the past, but it's probably been a few years, at least a few years. So, yeah, no, I think it's, it's, they, they would be in many respects best served by, you know, seeing this and trying to understand how they apply it to a development, application and land use process. Yeah, I definitely agree.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I just want to add one more point in terms of what you were, were speaking to. We, we do do some trends analysis work in regards to our water quality monitoring. We're starting to ramp up more into that, and DEQ is actually becoming more interested in that. So it's a very important thing to kind of look at, yeah, certainly what you're doing as far as trends and are you improving the condition and the situation? So, all right.
I also appreciate the concerns Commissioner Mesba brings and, and agree with the direction. I have just one little detail from, in my ignorance here.
Sure.
When you speak of 5% or 2%, what is the basis? 5% of what is it? The total resource, the total SARZ? SRZ? I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure.
The, the total resource that we're looking at?
No, no, it's just that, it's 5% of that area of limited conflicting use. So like in the case of this, you know, let's go back to here.
Is it, is it the entire area or just the area which is concerned with that particular development piece?
It's just the area that we would define as that area of limited conflicting use, which would either be like an upland, upland forest like this, this is a 10-acre upland forest, or it would be that small amount of fringe area along the edge of a repairing corridor. So in the case of this one, it's, it's a total of 10 acres, this resource category, this upland forest. So 5% of that is half an acre. So that's the starting point.
So it is, it's the entire area? It's not just the area which is a particular owner or particular development's concern?
It's the whole, yeah, whatever we define as that resource unit. But the 5% is once again just a starting point. We don't have to necessarily allow them to use that entire 5%.
And then does it become in effect a first come, first serve on that 5%? If somebody comes in and has a proposal that uses up to 5%, then that precludes anyone else from?
Yeah, in this case, you know, for, for some reason, they came back and wanted to do some other types of alterations, yeah, once you use that 5%, that's all that's allowed.
So, so it really is a first come, first serve?
In some respects, I mean, Vilbois is kind of a unique situation, you know, in terms of a large master planned area like Frog Pond is. But many times, we're just dealing with, you know, smaller developments, you know, especially where, you know, they're on maybe one side of a repairing corridor, then that other side of the repairing corridor, you know, if there's wildlife habitat, would get that same opportunity. So it just depends on where this development is occurring and, you know, at what So it just depends on where this development is occurring and, you know, at what point they are in terms of proposing it.
Easiest to deal with at the beginning stages of the development.
Right, yeah.
Any other? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
And Ms. Bejel.
Thank you, Chair Greenfield. So the next topic that we have on your informational session is just to get an initial briefing on House Bills 2001 and 2003, which passed earlier this year during the state legislative session. We actually invited representatives from DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, to come here today to present on those. They presented at the city council work session about six weeks ago, I believe. And, but they are on a roadshow and they are all over the place and they are actually presenting this evening at Metro in front of their policy advisory committee. So we could not get them down here in Wilsonville tonight, but they are available, we can follow up with them if there are any questions we can't answer tonight. But staff have been, we participated through the legislative session, we tracked these bills closely, particularly with early drafts. There were a number of things at local planning that we felt we wanted to have kind of our perspective included on, gave some positive feedback and direction that actually ended up getting reflected in some of the bills. So that was good to have our involvement on those. We've also listened to DLCD present this presentation a handful of times already. So Planning Manager Dan Polly is going to go ahead and give you an introduction based on their presentation, just to give you a sense of what's included in each bill. Some of you may have been tracking it closely, others may not have been tracking it as closely. And since this will have implications for the city's planning division and our planning work program over the next few years, we wanted to make sure that we started early and just gave you an overview of what's involved in them and what, how city staff is going to be working with our state representatives moving forward, how we're going to be tracking this, and then integrating that into our work program. So with that, I will hand it over to Dan.
Thanks for the introduction. Good to see the commission again this evening. So as they brand this, as they go out on the roadshow, they're really talking about the two bills, House Bill 2001 and House Bill 2003, in the terms of housing choices and then housing needs and production. Housing was certainly a big topic at this last session and so we'll, it's an ongoing discussion for sure. So why these bills? I started into this, housing is, as I said, a big topic and the House Speaker very much was focused on this. As Miranda mentioned, she was involved in some meetings down in Salem around these issues. So some main points that DLCD points out are the lack of housing that's affordable and the need for more housing choices and the amount of rent burden throughout many communities in the state. When it comes to housing choice, the House Bill 2001 really focused on what's called middle housing, as shown in this widely used diagram. Particularly for this bill, it talks about duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, as well as cottage clusters, shown here as bungalow courts, as well as townhouses. And then House Bill 2003 includes some different products. So it discusses, the key elements that discusses are regional housing needs analysis and then refocusing on individual communities doing housing needs analysis. And then on a new, a new requirement or work product that will be required to come out of cities is a housing production strategy. So the legislate, legislation definitely left a lot of details to administrative rulemaking, which is just getting started. It's a diverse group of people that represent a variety of interests around this topic. They've met once back in November and they have their second meeting this coming Monday. And here's a website that has all their information. It's in your packet or feel free to email me if you want that live link to get to all that information that they're regularly updating. There's also technical advisory committees that will advise the rulemaking committee as you do get into quite a bit of details. These advisory committees are focused on the model code, which I'll explain more of the role of that here in a bit. This new thing called an IBTR or Infrastructure-Based Time Extension Request, and then the housing production strategies. So let's get into more detail on House Bill 2001. There's two, so for House Bill 2001, cities that are, that this applied to are grouped into two things, two types, medium cities, which are cities outside of the Portland Metro area between 10,000 and 25,000. And what's required, the main thing that's required for them is that every lot that allows, that is zoned to allow a single family home must also allow a duplex. And then for large cities, which includes the whole metro area outside of small cities less than 1,000, includes that duplex on every lot provision, but also requires triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters in areas zoned for single-family residential. What areas zoned is, is one of the biggest outstanding questions that rulemaking will answer. So DLCD does point out that there is some flexibility allowed. This includes regulating, citing and design of these middle housing types. And we've briefly discussed this as part of our last residential discussions as well. Really, this will likely be a discussion about size and bulk of buildings, separation of the buildings, as well as design of parking and things like that, to ensure compatibility with a variety of dwelling types within a single neighborhood. And so that citing and design standards will be a big part of what we'll be discussing locally. So these model codes is a big part of what the, what the legislation envisions. And they're being developed, two model codes, one for the medium cities that require the duplexes and one for the large cities. The medium cities coming first, since that deadline for compliance is a year earlier than the deadline for compliance for large cities. The idea is that cities can apply these, can just adopt these outright. DLCD anticipates that many jurisdictions will adopt many components of it with different components modified to meet local needs. They've let us know that, or they, that Angelo Planning Group, which many of us are familiar with, is one of the lead consultants in this work. So a lot of folks that we're familiar with already will be working on these model codes. The other role, besides really being a resource to local communities, is also motivation and a backstop. The legislation says that if cities don't meet the deadlines to adopt code, then the model codes will apply.
Is my understanding correct that this, the distinction, medium and large, has to do with outside of the metro area?
Correct.
So how does this affect Wilsonville?
So Wilsonville is considered a large city. As is essentially everywhere except the small towns under 10,000, or sorry, under 1,000 within metro. So, you know, like Maywood Park or things like that, it doesn't apply to, but everywhere else within metro, the large city requirements apply.
Essentially, the distinction is meaningless, except that everything that applies to the large city applies to us.
Yeah, so this presentation, I will get more into what's specific to Wilsonville, but overall, to kind of put it in context, I'm talking about statewide, as you have in your packet also, has a map of where these regulations apply statewide. It kind of helps to color, you know, where the state's coming at in terms of these regulations and where you'll see these changes throughout the state. So a little bit more about the Infrastructure-Based Time Extension Request. This was a component that was put in to the code to address concerns that if you're making all these additional units, what if there's not enough infrastructure in a given area? So a community can request additional time, but must clearly demonstrate the constraint and have a timeline to address. DLCD is sure to, is, points out that these are localized constraints, such as area of a city that is served by a certain sewer line that is at capacity versus, you know, I-205 may be full, but that's not going to be able to be used as an infrastructure limitation if it's a regional issue like that. Some other provisions of House Bill 2001 that I'll go through briefly is there was this, I mean, the discussion went where, okay, how much density are you going to assume if you're going to allow all these units now, these different variety of units? So in terms of planning for urban growth boundary expansions, it limits it to a 3% increase can be assumed. It also add, built upon previous state, state, previous bills that have tried to remove barriers to ADU construction, so they added on top of things that we've already worked through as a city, owner occupancy being prohibited, as well as eliminating any requirements for onsite parking. And that's, those requirements are effective in a few weeks on New Year's. They also, the bill also stresses that, including ADUs and middle housing, when we're, when we're looking at housing production, there is direction to the Building Codes Division at the state level to develop single-family conversion standards to, to remove potential barriers in terms of building code, to converting single-family homes into multiplexes. And also, if you may recall during our ADU discussion last year, that we talked about the potential to, that it hadn't been required yet, but there was the potential that the state would put forward a requirement that new CCNRs couldn't limit ADUs. They have done that with this bill in addition, saying that new CCNRs can't prohibit any of the middle housing types, as well as ADUs. In terms of the timelines, it's interesting, so they have two model codes to adopt, as well as two deadlines for jurisdictions. So the medium-sized cities, for your information, have to be done with their codes by 2021, where the larger cities, including Wilsonville, don't have to be done until 2022. And so that's why they're working on the medium-city model code first. But there's a couple ways this relates to Wilsonville. First of all, the adoption of the model code that applies for us would be fourth quarter of 2020, is what they're thinking. And then we're required to be done with our adoption by 2022. However, there's also the timing of grant money to consider and so, which is based on the ledger, on the budget biennium. So there's all these moving parts and so I'll talk a bit more about our next steps and, but keep in mind all these different timelines for grant funding, as well as model code development, that we need to balance our, our local schedule with. So with that, I'll pause for any brief questions on House Bill 2001 before moving into House Bill 2003. Okay, can move on if none. House Bill 2003, so the first component is the regional housing needs analysis. So historically, housing needs analysis have been done on a, on a city level. Recently, Clackamas County did a countywide, or has worked on a house, countywide housing needs analysis. So this is looking at, at a region. So the state is leading this effort and wants this analysis done by September next year. And then the legislature is expecting a couple of reports in, during the next, during the 2021 session, talk about what happened and evaluate it if it, if these regional analysis are a good tool. One of the biggest challenges here is defining a region. And there wasn't really substantial time during the legislation, the legislature session, the legislative session to define what a region is. So they went with kind of a default of what are the Regional Solutions Team, which is a system set up to provide local resources from the state for land use and such. But that doesn't really consider commute sheds and things like that. So what a region is may be subject to further clarification, either through rulemaking or future legislation. The next thing is a schedule for updates of the housing needs analysis that are done by local jurisdictions. There's, the legislation includes specific timeframes. So within Metro, it's six years, that every six years, the city needs to present an updated housing needs analysis for, to DLCD. And then outside of Metro, it's eight years. They're currently developing a schedule that's due by the end of this year and we're in the midst of commenting on that. And once established, we'll, we'll really look at what, what we do next in terms of our housing needs analysis. So then there is the housing production strategy, which the legislation says what it must include. Just think of our actual housing strategic plan also, as you think about this and how it could relate, is a list of specific actions, including the adoption of measures and policies that the city shall undertake to promote development within the city to address a housing need identified in the housing needs analysis. So quite a bit of work to do here on defining what this new requirement is for local jurisdictions. And in terms of timing, then, this, we're not really able to work on a housing production strategy until we know what it is and the rulemaking is completed. So some other provisions of House Bill 2003 includes some work on affordable housing around publicly owned land for affordable housing, as well, as well as clarifying some things around affordable housing on church properties from prior legislation. From the presentations I've heard, this hasn't been highlighted as a big deal or brought up in other discussions I've been a part of as a big deal. So House Bill 2003 schedule, they're doing the, as I mentioned, they're doing the schedule for the HNA, Housing Needs Analysis Updates right now. The, the housing production strategy rulemaking will go into probably fourth quarter of next year. And then from there, starting the housing needs analysis coming in. And then the idea is initially that the housing production strategies would be, do the year after your housing needs analysis as a follow-up to those housing needs analyses. Additional clarifying questions on House Bill 2003?
I just have a comment. I read with great interest Eco Northwest's memo on this. This is Attachment 7 in our packet, at the end of it, where they talk about evaluating feasibility and regulatory barriers, that considering development feasibility during middle housing code development can help ground the process and code in reality. And what follows underneath it is, to me, a process of educating the residents on the reality of what this is, so that we don't get into all these kind of panic commentaries that, you know, we're going to lose everything we have in neighborhoods and all that.
Right.
It is, I think, to the extent that the assessments that you are needing to do... It is, I think, to the extent that the assessments that you are needing to do, generate ground truthing like that, that can be used in public outreach, in preparation for hearings and so forth, would be great because
Absolutely.
That, to me, is the, is the guts of this, is what impact could there be? And what impact is our vision for a Wilsonville that is inclusive? And how do we manage that in a way that is impactful in a good way?
Thank you. And certainly, one of the initial steps that we're envisioning in the process is public outreach and education around these issues of really, what is it going to look like on the ground? What are the impacts? What are the preferences of how we can keep this type of development compatible with existing and the type of neighborhood we envision in the future? Okay, anything else on House Bill 2003?
Yeah, I got a question. So on the housing production strategies portion of it, has there been discussion about what limitations, if any, there are in terms of what specific actions can be developed by a city, whether or not they have to be limited to things that the city can influence, i.e. the amount of space in the city, those types of things? I could see a situation where we could say, okay, to, to address our issues, our specific housing needs, we need more land, but yet the urban growth boundary doesn't allow for it. What, what happens then?
I imagine the feasibility of a strategy would certainly be part of the review. And we don't know all the answers. Again, it's, it's a new, it's a new creature that I'm cer, I imagine those questions will certainly come up during the rulemaking process and as these things start to get developed and reviewed.
I would also note that during House Bill 2003, the definition around the housing production strategy is less defined than it is on, than some of the strategies that are outlined in House Bill 2001 around, example, what is middle housing? What is it, you know, where is it going to go? What are we allowing? The housing production strategy is not, no definition is provided for it in House Bill 2003. And so as Mr. Polly mentioned earlier, one of the technical advisory committees that will be providing input and doing work for the rulemaking advisory committee, the TACs that will be informing the RAC, one of the TACs is set up specifically to talk about the housing production strategy. And actually, we will be one of the members of that TAC. So many more conversations to occur on what that means, what would be incorporated in, what type of strategies. So that comment is well noted and can be passed along. And hopefully, the dialogue and the discussion is a really fruitful one as we go through that process. I would also note that the website that was also mentioned for DLCD Rulemaking Advisory Committee, there is a way to sign up and receive notifications. So each time a meeting scheduled and occurs, they will send out notification. Each of the meetings which will occur in Salem will be recorded, so those can be viewed after the fact by anybody who's interested in seeing the discussion and the decisions that are being made by that committee or the recommendations that they're making. And you can get email updates throughout the process if you're interested.
Thank you. How does this timetable relate to our master planning for Frog Pond West?
I will, I will be getting to that momentarily.
Okay.
So, but essentially, the short of it is, we anticipated actually fairly smoothly going from Equable Housing to this, to addressing the House Bill 2001 to Frog Pond East and South. The timeline actually has a potential to work out quite nicely. So I will highlight that they are, Miranda mentioned the roadshow to Metro and the city council, they're also doing a public roadshow, that they have been to McMinnville and Medford so far. And the end of next month, there's a couple coming up in the metro area. The January 29th one is supposed to be somewhere on the west side. They haven't announced, last I checked, a location of that, but stay tuned. Certainly, if you're interested, when I find out where that is, time and location, I can share it with the commission, unless you really want to go to Hermiston in February. The watermelons aren't growing that time of the year. So any other discussion on the state comments? And then I'll go, I'll get into kind of next steps that we're doing as a city. So next steps around House Bill 2001, we plan on staying engaged in rulemaking. Then we're kicking off local work in February. We are, it's been indicated that we will have some state grant money to begin this work, which will really start with that public outreach and education that Cameron, that Commissioner Mesbub was referring to, and also starting a code audit to really better understand what are the areas of our code that need to be addressed. A lot of our PDR zones, as you know, do allow a wide array of housing. So in some ways, we may sit better than a lot of jurisdictions, but we got to understand rulemaking better before we really know for sure. But doing that code audit and seeing what, what changes may need to happen, and then based on different funding available and where the rulemaking is, we'll kind of pace, pace the process out from there. House Bill 2003, also stay engaged, as Miranda, as Ms. Bates Shaw mentioned, we will be pretty engaged in this on the technical advisory committee for the housing production strategies. And also, once we get some additional clarification from the state, there's potential to be working on housing needs analysis in the near future, building on recent work, both from what we contributed with the Clackamas County housing needs, countywide housing needs analysis, as well as a lot of the work that Eco Northwest did for the Equable Housing Strategic Plan. And so looking forward, big picture, I mentioned this briefly, based on Chair Greenfield's question, so first quarter next year, we're going to be finishing up Equable Housing, then be, at that same time, starting work on, on these, on House Bill 2001 and coming into compliance with that. Then the idea would be by quarter two, 2021, we'd be finishing up this work at the same time that we're really getting into the Frog Pond East and South work. So there's plenty of housing work to come for the commission. So finishing up Equable Housing, then working through House Bill 2001 and that community conversation and code changes related to that. And then getting into Frog Pond East and South, which if, you may recall, a lot of the conditions of approval from metro for the, for the expansion relate to the variety, the housing variety, as well as some of the other requirements that came out of House Bill 2001. So there's a lot of parallels there. So with that, any additional questions or discussion on the commission?
So from a, a timing perspective, or I guess a risk perspective, with the residential zoning standards that we're doing, I'm looking at the 2020 schedule, and it's showing public carings in March. Is there a risk that we're going to do a bunch of work on the residential zoning standards that will then have to be changed to address House Bill 2001? Should we be pushing out the residential zoning standards to Q2 to encompass that all at the same time?
So that'd be all the way to 2021 that we'd be, really, it'd be late in 2020 that we'd have a better idea of the rulemaking. I would say it's, it's a low to no risk, because we're really, we're working on the PDR zones that already allow that wide away, all those housing types.
Okay.
And so I don't foresee the rulemaking really having a big impact on those particular zones.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it's very difficult to get one's pudding when the ground is moving. And that's kind of what the situation is here. I'm concerned about, or I'm unclear and therefore concerned about what all of this means, or potentially means, for our calculation of density in our planning. This has been such a front and center issue for us, particularly with the community. How do we think about density in a situation where a lot could mean one to four dwelling units?
Yeah, that is certainly one of the, along with defining what area zone means, that's one of the headline questions for, for the rulemaking question is, every meeting I've been, that question's asked is, you know, it could go, you know, is it where certain of these product, of these middle housing or duplexes are considered as we consider ADUs now, not counting towards density? There's that potential. We're, I'm really not sure how that's going to go as rulemaking goes. So there's a potential for that to go a couple different ways. So stay tuned on that one and stay engaged to see where that discussion goes. Anything else?
So the whole thing is a huge question mark.
It is a big question mark there, yeah.
Very hard to formulate specific questions when the whole thing is a huge question.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much. So concludes the informational items, brings us to City Council Action Minutes. They've been distributed. Does anyone have any comments, observations? If not, we'll move on then to the work program. Is that any clearer now?
Well, you see the 2020 Work Program draft included in your packets. As you know, this often changes. Once we get a couple months into the year, things start moving around based on project timelines. But there are a number of different topics that we've outlined in there for you. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but it's included for your review.
Does, does Wilsonville Housing Variety Implementation Plan relate to House Bill 2003 or, or 2001, or none of the above?
Yes, that is a, a working title for the House Bill 2001 work.
Right. It's good to know these code words.
So if there are no other questions, Chair Greenfield, I just have one more brief informational item that's not listed on the agenda. And that is to honor and express our immense gratitude for two of our esteemed commissioners, both Mr. Postma and Mr. Hurley, our longtime volunteers with the city, serving on both our Development Review Board and our Planning Commission. And both of them have completed their second term of service on the commission, and this is their final meeting with us this evening. Commissioner Hurley has served over 11 years, serving on the city's boards and commission, first on DRB, joining in 2008, and then serving two terms on the Planning Commission, starting in late 2011. Commissioner Postma had just joined the Planning Commission six months prior to that, also beginning his service in 2011, coming from serving on the Development Review Board. I guess the two just couldn't stand to let the other have all the fun to themselves. Commissioner Postma served two terms on the Development Review Board, putting his service over 14 years, serving on the city's boards and commissions. The city owes this dynamic duo a debt of gratitude for their time. And time is precious, and I want to thank you both for your time. The time isn't just once a month for the meetings here before us. It takes time to review the packets, to prepare, to attend different city events, open houses for a lot of our projects, talk to other folks in the community to get their input before coming here. It's a lot of work and it takes a lot of time, and I thank both of you for that service. I also thank you for your brain power, both on the Development Review Board and then bringing that expertise that you gain there to the Planning Commission. I think it's invaluable when we're looking at the codes and we're thinking about making changes, having that experience, putting it to the test, knowing how it works, and being able to then inform that process here is really helpful and has been insightful. We've worked through a lot of big projects together, often difficult and mind-numbing at 9:30 at night, and I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank you for your honesty and commitment and to standing up for what you believe would be the best service to this community. I will miss both of you here at this dais. You have both made me laugh. You've both made me think and made the work that we all do together better and more thought out. And for that, I offer you a sincere thank you. And before we close the meeting and enjoy some cake in your honor, we do have a special guest here this evening. I have asked Chris Nansu, the Community Development Director, and the prior Planning Director, who has had the privilege to work with both of these gentlemen throughout that journey, for him to come here and offer another few words to these gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Miranda. Thank you, Chair Greenfield, members of the commission. At least she didn't say that you guys made her cry, okay?
Not done yet.
I just want, I, I only have about 20 minutes that I, I just, a few short words, you guys. It's, it's one of the great things about working in Wilsonville, you know, is really the quality of the people that we as staff get to serve. And our boards and commissions are filled with amazing people. And staff is, you know, very often, we're, we're humbled by the resumes, by the knowledge and the background that our volunteers provide. And tonight, we're recognizing two very special individuals who meet all of those criteria. You guys have served selflessly for, for many, many years. It's honestly quite rare for a citizen to serve two full terms on the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission. And tonight, we've got two examples of two outstanding citizens who have represented the development process and have come forward in the policy world. Eric has actually served the maximum allowed by ordinance, which I, I think there's only a handful of people that have ever done that. This is a major, major accomplishment. I'm quite proud to have been a part of that ride, Eric and Peter both. They both started their local land use careers, as Miranda said, on the Development Review Board. Eric came in 2005. Honestly, your experience as an attorney has been tremendous for this board and for the city. You know, the wordsmithing, the complex motion-making, Eric is one of the best at, at unthreading and tying together these complex motions. I can't tell you how much we appreciate that as staff, being able to have somebody who's taking the notes, who's writing, you know, and able to assemble it all in a cohesive and logical and an articulate manner at the end and make us all really look good as part of that process. Peter came in 2008 with a background and education in professional planning. What, what many of you don't know is that Peter served with the Portland Bureau of Planning before he became a police officer, so he has real-world planning experience. And he carried that forward with his passion to represent this fine city. Peter's no-nonsense, tell-it-like-it-is approach has always been very refreshing for me. I've enjoyed that. He has strong skills in, well, yeah, he has strong skills in mediation. He's got passion for great design, innovative design and place-making. These skills have made him a valuable contributor to the work of the city. Building back on Eric's skillset, you know, the code editing, the wordsmithing, his conflict resolution and his policy development, as well as just bringing strong process and order to, to the boards and commissions has been very valuable for both of us. You both provided really substantial leadership, thoughtful decision-making on many projects for many years, going back to the very first entitlements that we did in Vilbois. You guys saw a lot of the Vilbois project come through the door and you have made an imprint on that, on project. You both graduated to the Planning Commission in 2011, again, within a few months of each other. It's really amazing how the, the two of you have kind of come along through the, through the, the different ranks together. I have absolutely loved being able to work alongside Peter and Eric for all of these years. They've taught me many valuable lessons. To be able to plan a community with quality-caring citizens such as Peter and Eric is truly an honor and an experience that I will always cherish. So thank you very much for that. These guys give selflessly of themselves for the betterment of the community that they love. They both have very full work lives, wonderful families filled with tons of activities, yet somehow they come here to help us. somehow they come here to help us, you know, do the work of the city. And they find time to give back to the things that matter to them, this place that they call home, the place that they choose to raise their children and possibly retire someday, the great city of Wilsonville. So as I prepared for this moment, I came across a couple of quotes from their actual original applications to the city that I wanted to share. I unfortunately could not locate any pictures of this period of time. So I'm going to let you guys figure out which one of you wrote this and, well, I'll ask you after I read the paragraph. So, "Livability of a city depends upon a delicate balance of residential concerns, commercial growth, community parks and resources. You cannot complain about how that balance is struck if you do not include yourself in the decision-making process to some degree." Please raise your hand. That's Mr. Postma. So Eric, you surely have earned the right to complain. Peter's quote reads, "I bring, I bring a love of Wilsonville. My wife, children and I moved to Wilsonville five years ago. It was a very conscious decision regarding the city we moved to in the metro area. Wilsonville is where I plan to continue raising our children and remain for our retirement. My belief in the future of Wilsonville is very strong, and I plan on being a part of that growth, both in physical growth through the planning process as well as its civic activities." And to that, I would say, Peter, you are a man of your word. I do want to sincerely thank you both for many years of service for the betterment of the community. You've left an indelible mark on the city that will not be forgotten, and I look forward to what the future holds and for those opportunities to be able to work with you again in the future. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything you would like to share with the group?
Come on, you gotta.
See, just by holding backwards, I make them laugh.
Nothing but thank you. It's been an honor to work with the Wilsonville staff. City of Wilsonville has amazing staff. So to that, makes our job as volunteers a lot easier.
Agreed. I admire that. It's, it's been an honor to work with staff for a lot of years. You know, Chris, well, we were joking about that a couple months ago, right? We, we started out at the old firehouse over there together way back when. That's how long it's been. So it's, it's, we've seen some people come and go, and there's been quality people that are not here anymore and quality people that are just coming onto the, just coming into the, to the game here. And it's, it's been an honor to do that. So I, I appreciate everything that you guys do at staff. You know, we can, we can be cantankerous and difficult, especially between the two of us, but it's because we care. And, and you know, I've, I've always looked at it as you guys can, you guys can meet that challenge. So it's, I never felt concerned that we were pushing too hard because we know that you guys can do it. It's been an honor to serve with everybody here. It's been an honor to serve with people, can't even remember names from way back, Ben. It's that, been that long. So yeah, we, it's, thanks for everything.
Thank you both very much.
I will miss you guys. I didn't even say how much.
So our meeting is adjourned at 7:36.
Adjourned for cake? Is that what I meant?